October 1, 2025, school committee meeting, 6:30 p.m., State Council Chamber. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Rossi. Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Mr. Lay.
Here.
Ms. Martin. Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Mr. Bahu.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Five president, I'm sorry, six president when absent.
Three minutes, 3.1, approval of the minutes, the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee Meeting of September 17, 2025, wish to approve by Mr. Bahu, by Mr. Conway, all the affairs A.I., opposed motion passes. Section four, permission to enter, 4-1, October 1, 2025, wish to approve by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay. Questions? Mr. Bahu.
Just a couple of questions on the permission to enter. I think this goes to our curriculum director. American Reading Company, we have a $419,000 charge there, and then the E.L. Education for $127,500. I know we just bought new curriculum, and we're developing it. Is this the overall charge for training for this year only, or is it for throughout the time that we have this curriculum?
Dr. Fox Roy.
Mr. Bahu, yes, it would be for the entire time that we adopted the curriculum. This is actually part, the payment for this would come out of our PRISM II and PRISM III grants.
Okay, right, and it listed here, it was out of our school budget, that's why, that's why I asked about it. So yes, if it's out of the grant, that's even better.
Yeah.
Terrific. Thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rossi. Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Mr. Lay.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Six shades.
Section five, memorials. We have two this evening, 5.1, Anne De Souza, mother of Fatima De Souza, C.E.O.S.P. Coordinator, 5.2, Roger F. Landry, retired principal of the Green and Merklin Schools. Madam Clerk, reset the lights. May the rest in peace. Moving on to section six, motion 6.1 by Mr. Conway, request a review of the sufficiency of bike racks at each school to ensure there is adequate space to safely lock and store bikes and scooters during the school day for students who may bike to school, seconded by Mr. Lay. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of parents contacted me in regards to the bike racks, and they were wondering, I think at the school, they were, they were talking about there were no bike racks at all, and some schools apparently have them. So, they, I wonder if we could take a look and, and survey the schools to find out who has them and who does not have them, and whether we can get them, because some, you know, some kids like to use bikes, and even parents will bite them down too. So, if we can get a little report on that to find out where we stand with it. Thank you, appreciate it.
All the affairs A.I., opposed motion passes, 6.2, Mr. Conway, request of the Lowell School Committee, reinstated Safety Subcommittee, seconded by Mr. Ms. Martin, Mr. Conway.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, we have discussed a number of different safety issues in the last year or so, and, and the other day, when we were talking about a motion, and where to even put the motion, and obviously, it should have went into some type of a safety-type motion, and I was a little surprised that we did not have a, a Safety Subcommittee. I know that I chaired the Safety Subcommittee for a number of years, and there were a lot of, you know, a lot of issues that came up, and we solved them right there in that Subcommittee. So, I think it's important that we, we reinstate the Safety Subcommittee, Mr. Mayor.
All the affairs A.I., opposed motion passes, 6.3, we'll wait a little bit, 6.4, wait a little bit, 6.5, Ms. Doherty, request Lowell Public Schools, under the guidance of the Superintendent, collaborate with the Lowell Sustainability Council to develop an annual environmental impact competition for middle and high school students that would result in awards recognition for outstanding student projects, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I know the Sustainability Council has some funds that they want to be able to award yearly, so this would be a competition that would be for eighth graders and high school students, but they, the idea is to work closely with the school, so you create this annual competition, it could be part of the science fair, however it works best for the schools, so that it is sustainable through the years, that it's not a burden, and I look forward to hearing back when you move closer to determine that. Thank you.
Ms. Biden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, first off, I think this is a great idea, I think it'll be certainly of great interest to a lot of our students. What I would recommend, and I think Ms. Doherty is kind of hinting at this already, I was thinking, rather than the science fair, of building the sin as a special component of our Civic Stay event, if we had kind of a subset of projects that were specifically focused on sustainability and climate challenges. It's the same kind of dynamic, it's the same kind of project development, and it seems like that could be a, kind of a nice dovetail of, like, things that could have the same basic structure supporting them, but looking forward to hearing from the administration about recommendations.
All the affairs A.I., opposed motion passes, 6.6, Ms. Doherty, request the Superintendent, provide the committee with a report regarding the process reason for delays in getting school elevators repaired, including the classroom lifts at the Bartlett that have not been functional since June. The report should include proposed solutions for going forward. I do urge the speakers, Madam Clerk. Seconded by Mr. Lay.
Erin Wilson.
Hello. My name is Erin Wilson, I'm gonna put this down a little bit. I'm a second-year teacher at the Bartlett School, and the issue of accessibility in this building has been the biggest obstacle of my teaching. Every day for two years, students have asked me when the lifts will get fixed, so now it's my turn to ask you a few questions. Why is it that students are the ones who have to be flexible because of the lack of urgency from those in power, or better yet, lack of knowledge on this issue altogether? Why is it that they had to be wheeled out in the rain just to get lunch? Why is it that students asked, will I be able to get on the stage when signing up for drama club? They shouldn't have to think about their ability to participate like every other student. They shouldn't have to question their ability to participate like every other student. How can there be such disparities throughout a singular school district? How can a school with such high number of accessibility needs, if not the highest number of needs in the district, be inaccessible? To continue assigning disabled students to a building without the infrastructure to support them is a huge violation of their rights, and is setting their teachers and students alike up for failure. How do you expect students to want to thrive when the building that surrounds them does not function? Some students have such little faith in these ever getting fixed, that they've said, it's gonna be forever until we can do class in your room. Unfortunately, I don't blame them for that line of thinking, because why haven't all three been replaced? The last proposed time for a replacement, because there's been several dates promised, was in April, stating, starting with the lift in my classroom. Since then, two of the three have been removed, with the exception of the one in my classroom, which is the only one of the three currently holding classes. As recently as Monday, someone was tinkering with it, saying he was sent over to fix it, stating it must be working since it was not included in the removal process. How could there be such oversight? How can there be so much miscommunication, especially on something so important like students' access to education? It is not just the disabled students whose education is suffering, it's every student in the building, it's every person in the building. It's having to do class on the floor of the cafeteria, it's having to do class in another teacher's room, it's multiple teachers having to lug their classroom resources across a maze of a building with no transition time or support. It's instability and constant chaos in an environment that is possibly their only opportunity to feel stability. It's instability in an environment that owes them stability. You owe them that, we owe them that. No more excuses, we need action, and we needed it yesterday. If our words are not enough, I hope written and drawn testimonials from these students will convince you, which I've given to you, or better yet, visit during the school day and see for yourself. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Amanda Satterfield.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Satterfield, and I am the music teacher at the Bartlett School. This is my third year in that position, and all three school years that I have been employed, the wheelchair lift and elevator have been ravaged with maintenance issues. I witnessed this firsthand, as my classroom in the first two years of my teaching contained one of our three lifts, and now it's Erin's classroom. Now, I could use my time to reiterate how this is illegal, and it's immoral, because it is, as a violation of ADA, and we should not be forgetting that here. All students should have the same right to learn, and their district is wholly responsible for making that thought clear through their actions, but I'd like to tell you what this has meant, not just for a student's self-worth and sense of belonging, but for their education. From flip-flopping between working and not, to being totally condemned, these issues have had a plethora of repercussions on our students' education at the Bartlett. The time allotment for them to receive music instruction has been cut short on numerous occasions because of having to move to alternate spaces that are accessible. It was also cut short by having to move materials to alternate spaces with no transition time built in, and an elevator on the other side of the school. Additionally, this limited which materials could be brought at all, and thus had an impact on what curriculum could be taught. For example, fifth graders learn basic songs on the piano as part of their curriculum. I had a set of 13 keyboards set up for students to share in my hallway, where it stays there wired and ready to go all year. However, fifth grade had a student last year in a wheelchair who could not access my classroom. To make learning equitable, we all had to, we all had to move class into the science room next door. Moving and setting up pianos in another space would be next to impossible, making an experience that should be enjoyable into one that could not happen. Not to mention that that particular student decided to move schools to the daily this year due to these problems. Constant repairmen in and out of the classroom also proved to be a distraction, as well as a struggle in terms of planning. Would the lift be working? Could we do music class in our space? Even if we can, will something happen and it break down? These were all questions I asked myself for the two years I was in there, as I had to watch on at least two separate occasions, as wheelchair students got stuck in my lift and had to be rescued by firefighters. How such a situation was not met with immediate concern and repair upon the first happening is unbeknownst to me, but to happen more than once without action is despicable. Our school has begged and pleaded for something to be done in a timely manner regarding the repair of these by-law required-for-equity pieces of equipment, yet we have waited not months, as you erroneously believe, but years for this action. So I urge you to agree tonight to report with reasoning behind these delays and timely solutions for this issue, if that word can even be applied to the situation at this point. If the district is going to assign us students with disabilities, then the least that can be done is providing our school with the infrastructure to serve those students equitably, legally, and humanely. Thank you for your time.
Joanne Downing.
Testing, okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joanne Downing, I'm a lifelong resident of this city, a taxpayer and a registered voter. I'm also the proud mother of two children who attended the Bailey, the Daily, and Lowell High School. And for the past 18 years, I've been a teacher at the Bartlett, where I've witnessed firsthand the inequities that continue to plague this city's schools. Tonight, I want to speak specifically to the motion regarding the elevator chair lifts at the Bartlett. For more than three years, the chair lifts that provide access to classrooms and to the stage for ceremonies and performances have been broken and remain unrepaired. This has created an ongoing barrier for our students who use wheelchairs, effectively denying them equal access to parts of their own school. This is not a minor inconvenience, it is an accessibility violation, and has a profound impact on the daily lives of our students. When chair lifts don't work, or elevators, students are left feeling excluded, and staff are forced to scramble with inadequate workarounds. I have an example about that later. It undermines their dignity and sends the message that their needs are not a priority. And the broken chair lifts are just one example of a larger pattern. Years ago, the Bartlett was cited for missing stair railings that still aren't fixed, our parking lots remain uneven and unsafe, no accessible handicap spaces exist near the main entrance, the front ramp leads to a door that doesn't even open from the outside, and no entry doors have automatic openers. Even beyond accessibility, we've had years-long delays for basic things like lockers, classroom shades, promises after promises, or a functioning key pass system. Meanwhile, schools like the Bailey and the Daily have seen some updates such as new parking lots, while the Bartlett is left waiting for critical, basic improvements. Each of these examples tells the same story, the Bartlett is not being treated equitably compared to other schools in the district, and when those inequities intersect with accessibility, they don't just create frustration, they create direct violations of ADA standards and of our students' rights. I urge you to support this motion and commit to repairing the lifts, and beyond that, to making the Bartlett, to making the Bartlett a school where every student has safe, equal, and dignified access. Our students deserve that. And if I can just tell a very quick anecdote, this is relating to the elevator that is now fixed, thank you so much, everybody who worked hard for that, but people who don't work in the building think, mm, yeah, you can make do, you'll, the workarounds, the workarounds. For three weeks, I wheeled a little girl, first grader, out the front door, around the corner, to get to the cafeteria, and this happened about three times a day for this child. It was my job to do that at the end of the day, to get her to the cafeteria for dismissal. Our lot on the side of the building is a slope, so I am, I literally have this child's life in my hands. If I, if I were a feeble person, or if I trip, that child is going into the parking lot, into the side of a car. It's a huge safety issue, and it irritates me, especially as a taxpayer, seeing how things are not kept up, when people who are not in our building, on the daily, think, just get over it, you know, you can manage. It's hard, and it takes its toll, it really takes its toll on us, as a staff and as students, and thank you for your time.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. If I could, I'd like to take an item out of order, it was item 8.2, which is a response to Mr. Rossi's.
8.2 out of order with the motion, all the affairs A.I., opposed motion passes.
Thank you. So, and I want to thank you all for coming out tonight and speaking so heartfelt about the issues that have been a challenge at the Bartlett School. I can speak for myself, it's been years, years, at this, at this podium, asking for the shades, the windows that open and close, the lockers, that took multiple years, and I'm looking at you, but I know it's not the current administration that's had that history, maybe just the last year or two. But my motion is really asking for a report about what's happened with the elevators and the lifts, so we have clarity in terms of what's our role, and what's the city's role, and if we've had challenges because there's only one elevator fix-it company, what is the plan? Because we can't continue, and I know that we've worked, the administration has also looked at programming, that looking at, are there other buildings that might be better sighted in terms of access, but that doesn't alleviate the issues of unfairness. The issues regarding the parking lot, which was promised that we were gonna have that finished a couple of summers ago, I asked about that when we had our joint facilities meeting, and Mr. St. Seer said, it's coming up, it's coming up, but when? And then when we turn and we see other areas of the city that do get their parking lots done, when maybe the need was not as, we need clarification on what our role is in all this, so that we can really try to do better for the students and staff at the Bartlett School. And I just wanted to reference, Ms. Rossi has a response, and I know you probably want to speak after me, the motion that she had in July, which says that, okay, so the equipment is gonna arrive in the next, so we're expecting that the lifts, the old lifts have been removed, that was back in June, but my understanding is they weren't working since 2023, and when they took them out in June, they said, you'll have them when school starts, that didn't happen. Now we're looking at, it's expected to arrive in the next three to four weeks, this is dated September 25th, so now we're looking at the end of October, if that really happens, two months into the school year, three months of not having lifts. So, I would really, I look forward to getting a report when the lifts are actually in, that also includes some explanation of where the lines are in terms of responsibility. I know in July, I asked about the elevators or the lifts, whatever Ms. Rossi's motion was, and I was told, some of it is our responsibility, so I need to understand where that line is, and I really would like to feel like this committee is gonna be able to push and do whatever we need to do to make sure that all our facilities provide safe, healthy, and appropriate buildings for our students. Thank you.
Mrs. Superintendent, you want to just comment on the report 8.2?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, the mayor's referring to a response that Dr. Hall prepared for you regarding the Bartlett School, it's in your packet, I'm happy to take questions, and Dr. Hall is here for further questions as well.
Ms. Rossi.
I want to thank you for this response, but also to follow up on what's going on with the parking at pickup and drop-off with the handicap signs, and why a parent would be having trouble parking there and so forth, so if you could add that into what Ms. Doherty asked for, thank you.
Any comments? All the affairs, Mr. Lay, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. About the news about the elevator at the Bartlett that has not been working, I, as a school committee person, I did not know about it, that since school opening, that elevator has not been working, and nobody from the Bartlett Schools has ever mentioned that to me, or I don't know if any members of the school committee knew about it. The news broke to me only from the State Senate, when the, the State Senate's office has been talking about that with our Senator Ed Kennedy. So, first, I want to thank maybe one of you here, who broke the news about the elevator not working to the State Senate. Thank you very much, but I also feel that, that thing should be also mentioned to us, not directly to the State Senate, but either way, I'm glad it is working now, a good job, so, thank you.
Ms. Martin, Mr. Conway.
Thank you very much. You know, and I do think that it is a, I mean, it's a terrible situation that these students are facing, and we do need to do what we can. I mean, again, we know that there's this kind of line of demarcation of responsibility for actual building, the, the systems and whatnot in the buildings, that we don't have direct control over. But one thing that, that has piqued my curiosity is, what is the system in place currently for the setting of priorities? If, and I'm just going on what I'm hearing tonight, if the Daily's getting a new parking lot, and the Bartlett isn't, that's a problem. We've been hearing about the, the parking lot at the Bartlett, I think consistently for a number of years now. I mean, if someone asked me the question, I would have said, do the Bartlett first. I'm assuming that that's something that's happening between the city and the administration, but in my years here, I've, I've never been part of that conversation, I've never heard about that conversation going on, about how these kind of capital priorities are set. So I think, you know, and I think, you know, some of it, when we were replacing roofs and boilers, I mean, those are, you know, those are obviously the things that are absolutely necessary, but I do think that there is this kind of next year of, of capital investment, that I, I think it would be helpful for the, the school side to have the ability to set some priorities, if only so the city knows where we really need this, this work to happen. So I, again, I don't, I'm not aware of that happening, I don't know if that could be a function that we bring now to the facilities Subcommittee, maybe a joint, the joint meetings that we have scheduled with, with the City Council, but it seems like that could be an ongoing topic that would really be well-served by having both sides of this kind of conversation involved in setting those, those priorities. Thank you.
Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the speakers for coming up here and, and, again, once alerting us of the problems that are taking place at the Bartlett School. You know, a number of years ago, I started my, my career in education at the Bartlett School, so I'm very familiar with it, and I went up a few months ago, and I obviously saw the problems, and, you know, I will say that this has been, this has been brought up, I don't know how many times, and there's so many empty, empty promises, and these promises get broken, and it seems as though there's a delay, a delay, delay. Well, you know, it gets to the point where, you know, let's start with the delays and get the darn thing done for that community, and I mean, I just don't understand why, it's very obvious, and when you're talking about, you know, handicap accessibilities, I mean, we're violating the law, and this needs to be fixed, and not weeks and months down the road. We need to get right on it, jump on it, and let's get it done for the, for the Bartlett School community. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I just forgot to mention one thing, I was handed some notes from students at the Bartlett, and I'd like to ask Superintendent Skinner to maybe include that in the packet we get next, for our next meeting, so everybody gets a chance to hear from the students, and if I could just say, when I was at the Bartlett a couple of years ago, and an eighth-grade student asked me why the, his middle school didn't look as good as some of the other middle schools he had visited, the Wang, the Daily, at that time, we were trying to get lockers, shades, and windows, and it really broke my heart, you know, because kids know, they know, you walk into a building and say, wow, this school has beautiful lockers, and, you know, it's just, it's not right, and I think that, to Ms. Martin's point, we need to understand not only the delineation of responsibilities about who's supposed to fix the lifts or whatever, but also, how do we, how do we work with the city to prioritize those projects that are the most important? So I agree with that, thank you.
Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. In one sense, I respect all the comments and questions tonight, they deserve a full report, and we'll provide you that report. There were some details, I thought, that might be interesting to the committee members and the public for context. In your, in our report, we'll clarify what responsibilities are for the school department and the city. There's not a great deal of confusion in that area. Major elevator repairs are not the school department's responsibility, and we're not able to, 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 to contract to get that done, that is a DPW responsibility. Another feature I thought that might be of interest to the committee, we, this is not the first the first time we've had problems getting elevators fixed or repaired or replaced. There was an elevator at Lowell High School a couple of years ago that took 18 months for us to get repaired. And, you know, imagine the size of Lowell High School, there was one very old elevator that was in use during the time that the second one was down. During that time, I was so frustrated with the delays with the company that we contract with, or that DPW contracts with, I made an appeal to have us rescind the contract to that company and contract to somebody else. It turns out, there are just two companies in the whole state who do the work, and the second company is much less capable than the one that we use. And so I was pushed back on that, and just context for people to understand.
Can we go to New Hampshire?
I beg pardon?
Can we go to New Hampshire?
Good question.
Do they have elevator repair companies?
Regarding the comment that Ms. Martin made, we are on priorities. The DPW does consult us about priorities, and our facilities committee staff meet with DPW to assign priorities each year. There are any number of factors that play into that. One, key one, is MSBA funding. And so when you talk about the Bailey parking lot, for example, new roofs at various schools, new boilers, all MSBA funding, right? And so that's, that's one difference that makes it, that frees up the works and helps people choose what projects to do because we can get them funded. And that's sensible, right? That, that makes sense. Other things like new elevators and/or elevator repairs, you know, are not necessarily MSBA refundable. So some of those things play into it, that's all I'm saying. And we should give you these details in a proper, clear report that you can see.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Returning to six point three, Ms. Del Rossi. Request superintendent create a focus group involving Lowell Police, safety coordinator, assistant superintendents, representatives from all bus transportation companies, and parents to develop a clear timeline of the September 3rd events to improve overall communication and safety procedures in emergency lockdown situations during arrival and dismissal times. Is there a second on this one? Ms. Martin, Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes, I just heard different experiences from different angles with students at different times, from drop off to on the bus and so forth in a tense time. So I was just hoping to kind of just learn from this experience and figure out a plan that will work to, what if this does happen during an arrival or dismissal time, or when kids are in transit? What's our district's policy to look at? And to work with parents and teachers and, you know, Lowell Police. And so there is a well-known plan. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah. The motion I was written, I can't support. I mean, for one isolated event, to put all these people into a focus group is what I think is way overboard. I think that the superintendent stated to us last time, last meeting, that we're going to have the police come to a subcommittee meeting soon to talk about all the security things that they do do around the city, around all the schools around the city. I think that'd be beneficial for us to hear that first before we take this jump. It's just, again, my opinion. But, you know, assistant superintendents, reps from all bus transportation companies, I mean, it seems, like I said, in my opinion, overkill for one event that turned out to be what it was. But that's just my opinion, so. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. You know, I would say, and if the maker of the motion is amenable, I mean, perhaps it would make sense to refer this motion to this upcoming subcommittee. And then this could be one of the topics we discuss at that subcommittee, get feedback from the police about kind of how the event played out, any recommendations they may have moving forward. But then we kind of, you know, two birds, one stone.
Well, I will inform the safety subcommittee tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Doherty?
I just wanted to say, I think that's a good plan if the maker of the motion is okay with that. But I do think there is value in looking at what, I mean, that's the day that we had the, the young person walking down the street carrying what looked like a weapon, right? And I, I received calls from people who were upset, who weren't in that, like, immediate area, but schools that were still nearby, that I think it would be easy enough to do a connected call to everybody. You know, we, it's under control, this is what, so that you didn't have people not, you know, hearing things but not having direct communication. So I do think there's value in reviewing what happened that day to look at, what could we do better? What is, what's a plan going forward? God forbid something like that happens again. And, but I, to Ms. Martin's motion, to Ms. Martin's point, if you do it within the context of the committee, the subcommittee, you are getting the same information without convening this big. So I think that would be a good step one.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think the idea of the subcommittee is a really good one. I want, so I suggest that. I also want to offer a different alternative. The kind of meeting that Mr. Rossi is seeking occurs, and occurs regularly. And so another alternative would be, we can invite Mr. Rossi or any school committee members to join the meeting that already exists, and we can deliberately focus it on this topic, if you like.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I obviously overshot this motion largely, but I didn't know there was going to be a safety subcommittee also. I just saw that was like the motion after me, and now I was late to this meeting, so I'm glad to hear that that passed. So yeah, that makes perfect sense, just so we can get somewhat of a plan. And I think my biggest concern is, what if it happens when these kids are in transit? What's our plan on the buses and so forth? And to condense it overall, thank you.
So we'll be sent to the safety subcommittee, and we'll get that up. It was by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes, six point four, by Ms. Del Rossi. Request superintendent begin to collaborate with the city manager in efforts to update the current maintenance of effort agreement. Seconded by Mr. Conway, Ms. Del Rossi.
Yes, so in the last maintenance of effort report that Mr. Pinto had provided to us, it's just extremely outdated. And even hearing what's going on at the Bartlett and the needs there, if we can really specify it to what we've learned since that maintenance of effort agreement has been signed, and what works, what doesn't work, how can we prioritize things? I think that would be good to work together and update that. Thank you.
Mr. Bahu?
This is a very timely motion, Ms. Del Rossi. Thank you for putting it in. We did have a financial subcommittee meeting yesterday, and the topic was the maintenance of agreement effort. So ultimately, we had a long conversation about it. We are having ongoing meetings with City Hall, with Connor Baldwin, who's meeting with his team, and Mr. Ball, as well as Mr. Pinto. And we are coming up with some solutions and some recommendations that we shared with Mr. Pinto last night. We are having another subcommittee meeting soon enough to go ahead and sort of even ask more questions. Therefore, we think that, I think that this is sort of satisfied, and we're going in the right direction. And if you'd like to come to the next financial subcommittee meeting on this particular topic, we would love to have you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes, section seven, subcommittee seven point one, approval of the minutes of the curriculum and instructional subcommittee meeting of September 16th, 2025. Ms. Martin, chairwoman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So in attendance at our meeting on the, on the 16th were myself, Mr. Bahu, and Ms. Doherty, and from the administration, Dr. Fox Roy. We did have two topics of conversation. First was regarding the health, sustainability, and climate subject matter area. I do believe that part of this was a response to Ms. Doherty's previous motion, looking to get a better sense of exactly what was currently in our curriculum around this, this content area. I do think, you know, we certainly had a discussion about the variety of curricular resources that we have. We have Mystery Science, we have Open Said, I don't know if that's how you guys say it, but that's how I say it. And really, we were able to go through and look at some of the very specific benchmarks that are already part of our curriculum standards and that are being taught throughout the, throughout the district at all levels. For myself, I thought that we really did get a very good sense of how this kind of, you know, environmental topics and, and climate change science is really embedded in our overall science programming, and in some other places, too. It's part of some of our math programming, some of our, I'm sure ELA is represented as well. So it really is something that I think I got the sense was pretty effectively embedded into, into our curriculum. I will say, you know, I was particularly interested hearing about the Climate Resilience Schools Coalition, that is really a result of student-led interest and involvement. I know specifically mentioned in our report was Lily Ross, Jr. at Lowell High School, I guess, who had started this effort that includes both teachers and admins and community partners around these, around these ideas, hoping to promote student leadership in this area. So I think that's maybe the most encouraging thing we can see in terms of our effectiveness of including this, this, again, this topic area across. I think we are open to other ideas, and I, you know, I know from Ms. Doherty, this is an area that she's particularly focused on. I came away from the meeting feeling like we're, we're in a good place, but we certainly always have opportunities to grow and develop. So if there were other ideas or initiatives, certainly, I think the district would consider them. The second topic at hand was discussing the implementation of our new English language curriculum that was a very major purchase for the district, two separate systems that we're putting in place, EL and then ARC, the American Reading Company. So what happened was over the course, you know, what we were hearing about was some of the initial professional development that had happened through the district in order to kind of get teachers familiar with the new product, you know, take them through kind of the basics so that they'd be able to really implement this, this new curriculum in their classrooms. We have had experts from these two companies who have come in to provide this, this learning so that they're providing it directly. They're also providing that training to our onsite experts so that we'll be able to continue developing this over the course of time. You know, I think like anything else, you make a major investment in this kind of an initiative, but the real, the real test of it is going to be how it gets implemented. And I think that that's one of the, the key things that we were able to hear about, and that the planning that's in place for this to ensure that we have a very successful, you know, we've had, I think, a pretty successful launch, but we'll be looking throughout the year to see how this, how this really kind of manifests itself in our classrooms and what we can look at in terms of real successes for this major investment that we've made in a new curriculum effort. I welcome any questions or concerns.
Motion to accept the report, this report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Lay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes, seven point two, approval of the minutes of a policy and governance subcommittee meeting, September 16th, 2025. Chairwoman, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. Yes, the policy subcommittee met Tuesday, September 16th. Present were myself, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Del Rossi. For the administration, Dr. Hall was there. So we basically focused on reviewing policies for section C and D. We are slowly getting through this massive policy book. And most of our actions, which are indicated in the minutes, were we removed some policies that didn't belong there, reworded or edited some areas, updated language, and basically followed the recommendations from the Mass Association of School Committees Representative, Ms. Mellon, who is there to guide us. We also sent portions to Finance in the city for their review, to make sure that the information was accurate, that they might have suggestions that they want to change in the policy going forward. I don't know, through you to Dr. Hall, have we heard back from the city, or?
It's still pending, Ms. Doherty.
Okay, so that's fine. I mean, I know they've been very focused on the maintenance of effort report, as they should be right now, because we're trying to meet that, well, we're not going to meet the deadline, but we've got to get that stuff done. So I would just say that until we hear back from Finance and the city, we really can't move forward with voting on section C and D. We, the subcommittee has made, you know, our moves, but we really need to bring it before the full committee, but we need to get those, that input first. So at this point, I think we try to schedule, we're trying to do monthly meetings. October did not work out for MASC, so we'll be polling to do something in early November. I'm hoping the second week in November might work for my colleagues on the committee, that would be Ms. Del Rossi and Mr. Conway. Trying to do it on a week, we don't have a regular scheduled meeting, it's just a lot of work to be out for all these subcommittees as well as the school committees. So that's my report of progress. We are getting through there. Thank you.
Motion to accept the report, report of progress by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion passes. Section eight, reports to the superintendent, eight point one, 2025 assessment and accountability reporting. Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Actually, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to assure you, I was listening intently during my evaluation process, you voiced that what was of prime importance to you is student achievement. And so I'm very pleased to present the committee with a report tonight that represents the best assessment and accountability report we've seen in, in history, in, within memory. I can't say forever, of course, but, but it's a really wonderful report. Two highlights I'll mention to you. The state has pointed out our substantial progress in recent years and has quoted us as not needing assistance or intervention. We don't remember if and when that has ever happened in the past. The state has always been involved in supporting us, they're now saying that we no longer need that support. And one other marker is that we have averaged between eight and 11 schools in turnaround status for many years. Seven schools have now come out of turnaround status, and there remain just four, which of themselves are making significant progress. If you allow me, please, I'd like Ms. Crocker to just point you through the highlights of this report, and, and I would also like to then follow with just some perspective on where it leaves us in Lowell Public Schools. Thank you. Ms. Crocker?
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, committee members, for allowing me to share a little bit about the excitement that we have around the progress that's being made in the Lowell Public Schools and student achievement. So in this report, which is fresh off the presses, and we were very excited to have the embargo lifted in time to get it on tonight's meeting agenda, we're excited to talk to you about the progress that has been made, not just this year, but I think there's a bigger story, that if you look at the last two years consecutively, what you're going to see is consistency, consistency and movement in a positive direction. When you look at the history of our schools, when it relates to our accountability reporting, there's a long history of us taking one step forward and one step backward. Some schools would come off, some schools would come on, and then we'd sort of flip-flop year after year. And what I want to orient you to is, the second page of this report, there's just a very clear chart, color-coded chart, that shows where we were in 2019 in terms of the number of schools and which schools. And then you can see the, the sort of mishmash of the last couple of years as we've worked towards where we are now in 2025, with just four schools remaining on the state assistance list. One of them has made substantial growth, the STEM Academy, they only remain because there is a disparity in their Asian subgroup that is higher than the state average, and they have come up significantly in the percentile rankings. The Sullivan Middle School, which had, you know, a long history of being involved in the statewide system of support, has come up into the double digits of accountability rankings, and they are, they have done so while they served as one of our pilot schools for the new curriculum last year that we are now implementing across our district this year. And often, when you're doing a pilot, sometimes you can experience a bit of a dip in your progress, and that did not happen, that the, the ELA results at the Sullivan are stronger than they were, and they're very, very close to being off that state watch list as well. So we have a lot to celebrate. There's a couple of schools that were named, I know, for those of us who were together here last year, we recognize the Moody's School collectively because the state had deemed them a school of recognition based on the growth that they made last year. They are once again deemed a school of recognition because they have climbed another 13% in the accountability rankings, a second year in a row. But they're not alone this year. The W- The Washington Elementary School is also named a school of recognition, along with the Stockloso Middle School. Last year, they had climbed twelve points in the accountability ranking, and this year, another ten points on top of that. And so these schools are helping to develop models that we are now replicating and using as mentors in the district for some of our other schools. And we're going to take an opportunity to recognize the good work that has been done with those. A lot of this has come because we have had a relentless focus on high-quality instruction. That has come by developing a district priority through a district instructional leadership team that we have that made what we're doing in our classrooms very clear. Prior to this administration, there was a heavy focus on autonomous schools and schools sort of developing their own goals and working more independently. And schools still develop their own goals. They develop their quality improvement plans, but we do that now under the guise of some common, well-defined instructional priorities. And we think that the action steps that we have collectively done throughout our district, along with a relentless focus on high-quality instruction and some terrific educators in our schools, are really what is leading to these exciting outcomes. And so we're not where we want to be with proficiency. Proficiency will continue to be the place that we, we focus. Getting all students to that grade-level standard has to be our greatest equity marker in our district, and it's going to continue to be the big area of focus moving forward. We saw graduation rates at Lowell High School exceed the target. We saw the reduction in dropout rates at Lowell High School exceed the target. We saw our chronic absenteeism improvements meet our target in grades three to eight and exceed the target at Lowell High School. We did see a slight decline in Lowell High School's accountability ranking and a decline in the overall academic results. That follows a statewide trend. The Commissioner of Education, when he announced the results on Monday, indicated that this was happening across the state, and the attribution is to removing the MCAS test as a graduation requirement and therefore sort of lowering, lowering the investment on the students' part to really commit to sort of putting, putting that full effort into that assessment. And so there has to be more done to get students to buy into being able to show us what they know and doing their best work. But we are moving in the right direction, and I want to make sure that the story is around the consistency and the relentless dedication of our educators and, and having a unified plan that we stick to and that we keep looking at data constantly throughout the, the school year to ensure that we are tracking where we want to be at the end of the year. So we will continue to focus on raising our proficiency rates in the year to come as we implement all of this new high-quality instructional material in all of our core content areas now, but we're really excited and I, I look forward to unpacking these results, very likely in an upcoming performance subcommittee meeting.
If I may, do you mind if I finish the, there's a couple of pieces of context I think that are very important. First and foremost, these results are a tribute to our teachers. Teachers are the ones who have worked with students to help them perform and to achieve at the levels that we're now being recognized at. And we, we have some of the most dedicated, wonderful teachers, and so they really deserve to be recognized for, for the results. The teachers are not static. They're always looking to improve, build their skills, make sure the students are achieving. Ms. Crocker referred to data use. Teachers aren't necess, teachers will rifle through these results, for sure, but they do that almost every day. Teachers look to see what are the results of assessments that they do along the way. Sometimes an assessment is given at the end of one lesson, and they will reteach and, you know, go back to students that are not successful with that. These are the, the ways that our teachers are ensuring results. The teachers, in turn, we have had for the last few years, a focus with our leaders on what we call instructional leadership. So the teachers are, are being supported by leaders in schools who are supporting instructional improvements. There's also a whole slew of support staff that are part of that success story as well. I want to highlight something about the progress. The progress, according to numerous metrics that we follow, has been incremental. The good news tonight is just so happens that the incremental progress has taken several schools past a benchmark, so that they're now out of, you know, this turnaround status. But it's not like a sudden result. It's just incremental progress has managed to get several schools past that threshold. We, we, we focus in Lowell Public Schools on what we call our culture, our culture of continuous improvement. There are numerous aspects, and I won't talk all night about that, but two I'll focus on, if you don't mind. One is data use. One of the strongest indicators of a culture of continuous improvement is how we use data and how our schools use data. And by the way, it's the same protocol with wonderful results or with terrible results. You look at them, you find our strengths and weaknesses, you hypothesize, why did this, why was this successful? Why were these students not successful? And you take an action to correct it. And so that, that sort of data use has become more involved in our culture of continuous improvement. A second one that's not well-known or recognized is coaching. Our union, through their affiliation with AFT, supports the fact that when teachers do professional development workshops, between five to twenty percent of what they learn gets implemented in classrooms, not much, with coaching ninety-five percent. And so, and so we have leaned in and are leaning in this year to teachers receiving the support of coaches through cycles of coaching in, in their classrooms. If I might just point you to another part of the perspective. In our strategic plan, we have set ambitious targets for two thousand thirty that, that call for us to make this kind of progress each year, and on some of the metrics, more progress than we've made this year, between now and two thousand, between now and twenty thirty, we, we've set some really rigorous targets in here. You can refer to them in the strategic plan. And lastly, the data on student achievement is not the whole story. Actually, our strategic plan also says that we want to focus on safe and welcoming schools. We're going to hire and recruit and develop highly skilled teachers and talent in our schools, and we're going to work towards supportive and efficient systems. There are many other metrics that we follow and that I'm happy to tell you are also trending upwards. I'd like to finish by thanking the school committee for their support and to tell you that this is just the beginning and that we very much are dependent on your continued support as we do this work. Thank you.
I don't think I even have words to say how I excited I am about this information. It really is. I mean, in eighteen years of being on the school committee, this is my eighteenth year, I don't remember being under six in turnaround status, and that was a while ago. And something like fifty-one percent substantial progress towards targets when the state was thirty-nine percent, you know, we always compare ourselves to the state and say, if we can meet the state, you know, because we're, we're an urban population, our kids don't have the same advantages of kids who go to a school in Wellesley or Weston, but we really beat the state. I, I don't remember ever beating the state that much. And then the fact that we are better than pre-COVID results, like there's hope that we can start to gain back some of those losses. I mean, I don't think we'll ever get over the trauma of that period, especially our children who lived through it, but for myself, I'm, I'm traumatized by the whole COVID thing, right? And that we've actually, we're better, our results are better than COVID. And I love that it's been incremental and consistent because that's the kind of growth that feels like it's going to last. You know, it's not like some spike or something, some fluke. Like this is steady results from the consistent effort and work, and I just want to say thank you and bravo. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo with Superintendent that the, the teachers and staff who have direct contact with the students, who did a good job, the, the data looks very good. And, and also, I want to congratulate the students. The student themselves has improved, so I really, really, I'm, I'm very glad to see that. So to you, Mr. Superintendent, it's, it's done under your watch, so I hope to see this data continue to progress. I do have one quick question, though. High-quality instruction, what is the, what does that mean?
Thank you. Thank you for your question, Mr. Lay. Typically, the phrase, and we sometimes use the term HQIM, is referring to the curriculum materials. So oftentimes, in a simplistic, simple answer would be that oftentimes, materials that we've used can be taught in a way that students are relatively passive. I'm teaching you a lesson and you're listening to me as a teacher. High-quality instructional materials focus a lot on content and on reading and discussions so the students are actively engaged in building knowledge and in critical thinking.
Thank you, and good job. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Rossi, you're spot on.
Thank you. I, I mean, this is great news for the district overall, but one thing I was looking at is the schools like the Robinson that have been stuck in that red area, the Sullivan, the Lowell High, and the, I think it's the Moody, yeah. And it, that's areas that really concern me because what are we, I guess my question is what are we not doing? Like, what extra push? And I think the idea of having the schools that are, are deemed the, I'm sorry, well, what, like the Stockloso School, what, what is it called? The what?
It's a school of recognition.
School of recognition. School of recognition, working with schools that are stuck here. I think that's a great idea, but I just feel like these kids are, are really struggling. And MCAS shows one set of strengths, and I feel a lot of what we're seeing is not so many strengths with our kids in all of the skills, in, in skills essentially applying them, right? And so I just want to make sure that these kids succeed too, you know? And what can we do to get the, them out of this red glare?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Rossi. If I may, I'm going to divert for just a moment. One of the things I want to mention about this trend I'm talking about among many, many metrics, the trend isn't a good direction, and sometimes we pass benchmarks and so on. It's also possible, and actually likely, that we'll have bumps in the road. So we have this new curriculum, we believe it's going to be super. Can you imagine, like, in ten years from now, if we, if we look back in ten years, that it was the best curriculum we ever invested in, right? There still could be an implementation dip. That's often common, right? So we, we have to continue to watch all these metrics and continue to make progress, but we want to be resilient and understand when we have blips that we also treat them seriously and have your understanding. As regards Mr. Rossi's questions about school, other schools, one of the benefits, one of the great benefits of making progress and having schools exit this sort of, this status of where they need assistance, is that we are able to focus our resources more on the few schools that are remaining. Secondly, importantly, we really believe we know how to do it, and we have built a track record of being able to do it, and so we know what some of those schools need. Some of them, you know, need additional support from us. Some of them need additional support from the school committee. There are some of them for whom, for example, enrollment patterns are a problem, and they will always be unless we fix that enrollment issue. And so we will look at that with you, committee, but I think it's very hopeful, once you're on track and you lose some students, excuse me, you, you drop some schools from needing assistance, you can focus more on the remaining ones who do. And a fuller answer, Mr. Rossi, we have lots of ideas and we will bring many of them to the committee for your support.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, certainly I join my congratulations for really the full team of people from administration, specifically through our teachers, obviously, and, and for students who, who took the test seriously, which is more than I ever would have done. I, I do just want to point out, and I believe Ms. Crocker Roeburg hinted at this as well, there is still proficiency questions that we're going to need to address. You know, I looked through the, through the report and I, and I, I'm the first to say that growth data is incredibly compelling, and I, I think it, it says a huge amount about the quality of work happening in our, in our classrooms. But I do think we, it is at our peril that we, that we don't address the, the proficiency issues and do it in a way that takes into account where we land statewide. Just recognizing, you know, our students certainly have different challenges, you know, kind of collectively. They, they require additional supports and, and investment so that we can ensure they're successful. But at the end of the day, we can measure their growth and, and that's important, but we need to be able to know that we're graduating students who meet those same proficiency levels. So it's, it, you know, they're, they're, they're two measuring sticks, and I think they're both important. So I, if, if we're seeing, you know, the, the success we've seen with growth is impressive and, and certainly bodes well, that you'll be, we'll be pulling up the proficiency as well, but that does need to still be kind of part of our conversation. I, I didn't see anything in the report about that, kind of any proficiency measures, which I, I think it would be great for us to be able to get that data as well. I know you just got the embargo lifted, so you're just kind of, I'm sure, wading through a lot of different data points, but I do think it would be helpful for us to kind of have those numbers in front of us, too, because I, I think sobering was the word that Desi used when they were announcing everything. You know, we need to keep our, you know, keep our eye on the prize. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Martin, I just want to say that I think your points are really important, and it's all, we, it, growth is the fairest measure, and it's all very well to make wonderful growth, but we want our students to be proficient. That's their achievement scores. For what it's worth, in both ELA and math, we've made incremental growth in achievement as well. And I see it, but the point is well-taken. If, again, if I refer to the strategic plan that we hold ourselves accountable for, when we look at in there the measures that we're going to hold ourselves accountable to achieve in 2030, they are on student achievement, not just growth. So, and the point is very well-taken. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I certainly thank the team when I've taken a look at those scores, and it's going to take a little while, I think, to unpack everything, and I look forward to further meetings so that we can analyze in more detail, but it certainly seems like it's a, we're going in the right direction. There are certainly some areas that we have to concentrate on, and, you know, it's funny, I remember someone mentioning in a drawer a, a parallel to sports where, you know, you, you take a look at a, and you get a great shot, and you say to yourself, wow, and you've got that big smile on your face, and before you know it, what happens? Your, your competitor hits one right by you because you're not, you're not, you're not jumping on things. And when we take a look at this here, you say, okay, we got to continue to go, and, you know, we appreciate the hard work that's being done. There's no doubt about that, and I think the scores are certainly showing that. And especially, I think we need to give a shout-out, not, not just to, to the, to the central and to the people, the hard-working administrators, but the classroom. That's where it really happens. We all know that, because these teachers, they work their tail off, and it's amazing, you know, it's a, you know, sometimes, as I've said to you before, I'm, you know, I spent most of my life at, at the high school, and if we put a couple posters up, we think we really decorated the room. You go into the elementary schools and it's amazing. There's every little corner, something is, is going, something is working, something is moving, and what that's doing is obviously it's helping educate the students. So I, a big shout-out and a thank you to the teachers and the paras and the, and the tutors, because let's face it, they're the experts, they're the ones that drive education. So again, I thank you for the report, and I look forward to future meetings so, again, we can unpack, unpack these numbers. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I'd just like to echo my fellow school committee members' responses, as well as the administration. This is great news to see how much progress we have made. I mean, when you just look at last year to this year, last year, we had eleven schools of the twenty-four that were noted were under intervention, and this year it's four. That in itself speaks volumes because the focus can now begin on the four rather than the eleven that were. the 11 that we were focusing on. So that's a big, big deal. The growth asset, with growth comes, you know, better scores. So we're looking at the students' achievements, and we believe that we are going in the right direction. And as Ms. Doherty stated, she hasn't seen this in 18 years. So that in itself is just outstanding work by this administration and the staff and the paraprofessionals and everyone involved that touches our students. It's actually pretty emotional to see so much growth. There is one question that I have, though, because I see on page four, I see that we had some target percentages, and we had, you know, excessive growth with Asian students. We had excessive growth with multirace students, with the Asian students by 22%, with the multirace students by 31%, with the high-need students by 5%, and the EL students by 10%. It's outstanding. However, you know, the African-American black students have gone down unfortunately by 20%. And unfortunately, that seems to be the common thing that's happening in this report. So I'm not sure, because I really felt like a lot of our African and our black students were growing within our school district. And when I'm out in the community, I'm a cheerleader for Lowell Public Schools, and I want to say, hey, listen, send them to Lowell because there is so much more opportunity. So, you know, if we can focus on that as well, other than the four schools that need to be, you know, intervened with, as well as the test scores that we're looking to go ahead and see, so that we can see the growth within our schools, which realistically ends up in graduation and more success stories. So thank you for all you've done, and we're looking forward to more growth.
We're on 8.3 quarterly grants update, fourth quarter, July 1st, 2024, July 30th, 2025. Any comments or questions? Moving on, I'm sorry. Mr. Lay, you have something?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Superintendent. Some time ago, we spoke about the After Dark program that is a grant from the state. Would that grant be listed among, in here, or, because I didn't see it?
Thank you, Mr. Lay. I'll refer your question, if you don't mind, to Dr. Pinto. Dr. Pinto, please.
Thank you for your question, Dr. -- Mr. Lay, I'm sorry. After Dark is a part of our regular program. It's not a grant program.
Okay, so I thought the After Dark program is the program that we got money from the state in the form of grant. Am I wrong? Because when we talked about it, like, two meetings ago, it was confirmed that--
I believe the state reimburses us per student in After Dark. It's not necessarily a grant, but it's reimbursement.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. No questions.
8.4 quarterly budget update, fourth quarter. Any comments or questions? 8.5 has been pulled, we'll come back at a subsequent meeting. 8.6 exit survey feedback. Comments, questions? Motion to accept the report of Superintendent, 8.1 through 8.6, as reports of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Rossi. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 8.7 home education. Motion to approve home ed by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five ayes, one absent. Six ayes, one absent.
Nine, new business. 9.1 approval to accept and expend allocated FY20 awards. Motion to approve by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Six ayes, one absent.
9.2 budget modification request. Motion to approve a budget modification of $155,000 awards by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Six ayes, one absent.
9.3 request for additional security officers at Lowell High School. Motion to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just a quick question on that. Through you to the Superintendent. I think certainly it's a good idea. We have additional eyes on the situation there and that we can kind of hopefully tighten things up a bit. The question I have is, why isn't this money coming out of the Lowell High School budget?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Conway. When Lowell High School received its budget last spring, it allocated the funds as best they could, and then they told us what they needed in addition. So we were unable at that time to, we didn't have any additional funds to give them at the time.
So at that particular time, they told you that they needed a couple more security guards?
They noted that they needed five more.
They need five. How many do we have now?
Offhand, Mr. -- 13?
13.
The space is, one of the, part of the rationale is that the space is expanding, and, you know, there are so many exits and entrances and so on, that they need more people to cover more space.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure, we have 3,500 students at Lowell High School. I mean, by far, it's one of the largest high schools in the state. And when you look at these numbers, Brockton High School has as many as 15 security guards, and, you know, we only have 13. As a matter of fact, I was going in for a little, for a meeting about Chapter 74 program a week ago, last Friday, and there was a person outside, to talk to your scooter discussion, there was a, there was a whole bunch of scooters locked up around Lowell High School. I was walking by one, there was a person trying to lift the lock mechanism over the bike. And I'm like, well, that seems a little bit weird, and I did not want to get into a beef with the person. So when I went in, you know, I had to push through my ID and such for the meeting, and I said, hey, there's someone outside that's trying to take a scooter, it seems like. Could you go check on it? And they said, Mr. Bahu, that's our biggest problem that we're having here right now is that they're just taking so many of these five, six, eight, $1,200 scooters right from our students as they're parked outside. So to have more eyes, and then they said something like, ultimately, we can watch these cameras, we don't have enough space, we don't have enough manpower to go out there and be at every single event. So I think this would be quite beneficial for the size of a high school like Lowell High School to have a couple more security guards, and I will definitely vote to approve it.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
9.4 request for approval to pay invoices rendered prior to contract execution. Motion to approve, request by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
6 and 10 convention conference requests. We have two this evening. 10.1 interstate travel requests, AFJR ROTC drill team to New Jersey. And 10.2 interstate overnight request, RPPL conference, Washington, DC. Motion to approve, both by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Lay. Good evening.
You mean, sitting up here and not turning off the lights and then turning on the lights? You wouldn't believe when I started up here how much I found the little stupid little switches. Yeah, no, it was, it's good. It was a good night.